6:01 PM. Roll call, if we could go through, starting with Joe, please. Yes, I guess that's what I want to do. All aldermen are present. Matty Pomquist is on the Zoom speaker. Go ahead, Joe.
Joe Aikstead, City Engineer.
Kyle Kearns, Director of Community Development.
Paul Viller, Public Works Superintendent.
Derek Budzberg, Waste Water Superintendent.
Jake Clinkforth, Parks and Building Superintendent.
Todd Hekes, Fire Chief.
Dan Hossins, Police Chief.
Ryan Hartman, Human Resources Manager.
Catherine Elkert, Library Director.
Tim Disorsy, Finance Director.
All right, thank you, everybody. Item three, Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in Vocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Item four, Administration of Ceremonial Oath of Office and Badge Pinning for the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department. Jennifer and Chief.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Foy.
I, Joseph Foy.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as Lieutenant.
To serve as Lieutenant.
Of the Police Department.
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Borkart.
I, Andrew Borkart.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as Lieutenant.
To serve as Lieutenant.
Of the Police Department.
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Jenkin.
I, Eric Jenkin.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as an officer.
To serve as an officer.
Of the Police Department.
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Trenton Webberking.
I, Trenton Webberking.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as an officer.
To serve as an officer.
Of the Police Department.
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Schumacher.
I, Ryan Schumacher.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as an officer.
To serve as an officer.
Of the Police Department.
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Item five, Reading of the Minutes of the Previous Meetings Held on October 15th and November 14th, 2024. See Attachments 1 and 2. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion, motion to approve.
I get a motion by Austin, seconded by Veneman, to approve both meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Matty?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight ayes to zero nays. Item six, Consider for Adoption a Resolution Adopting the Tax Levy in the City of Wisconsin Rapids 2025 Budget and Waterworks and Lighting Commission 2025 Budget. See Attachment Number 3. Counsel, what are your wishes? Mr. Delaney.
Is there a way that we could do them separately, by any chance?
I can separate them out, right? Tim, are these combined resolutions, or can I separate them? Okay. All right. Are you asking to separate Waterworks and Lighting Commission from the City of Wisconsin Rapids budget?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's fine to be two resolutions. We'll just, Tim can type up the second one. It's just going to basically be, uh... Well, actually, I think the Water and Light Budget could probably just be a simple motion, or... So they could be separate.
Okay.
So my motion was to adopt the resolution as printed.
Okay. So we have a motion by Pluist, seconded by Pollock, to adopt the resolution. The tax levy in the City of Wisconsin Rapids 2025 Budget and the Waterworks and Lighting Commission 2025 Budget. I have a motion and a second. Opening of floor, Mr. Katna.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to, and this is excluding what'll be voted on with Waterworks and Lighting. But the city budget comes to the common council every year for approval. As many of you are aware, or if you're new to council and you've watched, or if you're a citizen, you see us go through these meetings and exercises of determining the city budget. What's happened for a number of years now in a row is we go through those exercises, and not a single thing is pulled out of the budget that comes to us. And that's what we're looking at again this year. We had some discussions around it. Things didn't get passed. And so this year, it looks like, again, we're going to move forward with a budget that council didn't make any changes to. And with that said, is we borrow to operate the government. You know, you can attribute some of that to things, you know, they'll say the roads. Well, I think the basic things you expect from your city government are police, fire, roads, and all those other basic essentials that you think you're going to get. But we're going to borrow to do that. And we, once again, weren't able to get that budget down or get that borrowing down. So I think we got a lot of projects in the future that are going to need some of this capital applied to them. So potentially only seeing that borrowing going up. Projects like the rail movement that's been talked about, projects like Eighth Street and much others that may be needed in capital improvement. And so what I say to my fellow council people is, if there's one thing in this budget that you don't agree with, you should be voting no to it. You should not pass a budget just to pass a budget and be done with it. If there's something in there you don't agree with, we should be voting no, and then working out that disagreement and putting a budget forward to the people. So that's all I got to say.
Mr. Pluist.
So in regards to the last meeting where we discussed a potential cut to the library, it did generate many emails to me. And one of the emails was an ask for a letter to be read here at tonight's meeting because that person could not be here in attendance. So I did tell that constituent that I would read their letter. So here it goes. This is from Ruby Marty that lives in my district. And she writes, "I was not able to speak in person as I had obligations tonight, so I asked my elder person to speak on my behalf. My name is Ruby Marty, and I'm currently a sophomore at Lincoln High School. I'm part of the Miss America Organization. And with that, each title holder holds a community service initiative that would, that they work to promote and support during their year of service. My initiative is called Silence is Not Golden. Early language matters. And is with all promoting, encouraging, and encouraging early literacy, communication, interaction with children. My passion for this initiative came from my mom, as she is a speech and language pathologist. She has been such a great influence in my life, and both my parents took the time to make sure that my siblings and I had opportunities to grow excellent vocabulary and communication skills. Many of these opportunities were because of the Macmillan Library. And because of that, and my involvement here with programs such as LINA, I would like to speak on why this budget, potential cut to the library would be a huge mistake for society as a whole. To begin, the library provides plethora of programs and activities that are open to the public. As a child, I can vividly remember my parents taking siblings and me to the Storytime, slime-making classes, and even magic shows. It was experiences like these that had set the stage for my life. And as they were fun, encouraging activities that allowed me to interact with other children and develop functional early language skills. Macmillan Library has offered me so many other free opportunities that have helped tremendously with the growth of our children in society. To continue, I'm an avid volunteer with the library. I just finished volunteering the 10-week LINA program, which helps parents learn more about importance of early communications and interactions with their children. Through this, I have had the chance to see growth in children firsthand. If it weren't for the Macmillan Library being so generous and allowing LINA to use the space, the LINA program may have not moved to Wisconsin Rapids. And so many families would miss out on incredible free program. The last thing I want to touch on is how many people the Macmillan Library affects. Although not all of you in the community have children, the library still has such a crucial role in society as a whole. As the younger generations will eventually grow up and need to fill jobs and careers in this community. Without the library, such a valuable resource, our community would be in great trouble as the programs offered through the Macmillan Library are done so to help encourage the growth and success of the youth in society. As someone who has grown up in the city, I understand how vital the library is and how many lives effect, it affects. This cut cannot happen, as the library needs these funds to continue expanding its program and audiences that will benefit the community. Ruby Marty.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did you have anything else?
No.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. And if there's no other questions, comments, please go ahead and cast your ballot. Matty?
Hi.
Thank you. All right. Motion passes, six yeses to two nos. Thank you. Item seven, Consider for Adoption the Actions of the Planning Commission at Its Meeting Held on November 4th and November 19th, 2024. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read the report from November 4th first. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on November 4th in the council chambers. A quorum of members was present, and a list is available in our office and the clerk's office for others that were in attendance. Item one was the approval of the report from October 7th. There was a motion by Tao to approve that report, seconded by Maru, so that motion carried 5-0. Item two was a request from Michael and Victoria Fisher for a special exception to allow an accessory building in front of a principal building in the mixed residential R2 District at 1960 Gainer Avenue. Staff provided a summary of the requests, and denial of the request was recommended by staff. A lengthy discussion ensued amongst commission members, the staff, and applicant, which included discussion about setback averaging, zoning requirements for new construction, physical characteristics, uniqueness of the property, et cetera. There was eventually an emotion made by Zachar to approve the request for a special exception to allow an accessory building in front of a principal building in the mixed residential R2 District at 1960 Gainer Avenue. The uniqueness cited was due to the accessory building being approximately 75 feet away from the principal structure, creating the illusion of having been constructed at a less substantial distance in front of the home. There was a second by Tao. That motion carried 5-0. Item three was adjournment. There was a motion by Tao to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Maru, so that motion carried 5-0. The meeting was adjourned at 4:49 PM. The second report I'll be reading is from today, November 19th. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on November 19th in the council chambers. A quorum of members were present. Also in attendance were Director Kyle Kearns, Alder Dennis Pollock, and Kevin Fangman. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Item one on the agenda was a request from Badgerland LLC to dedicate right-of-way along Airport Avenue and Sampson Street at 3230 Sampson Street. Parcel ID is noted. And that is via a certified survey map. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There was a motion by Tao to approve the request to dedicate right-of-way along Airport Avenue and Sampson Street at the address identified via certified survey map to create two lots, a second by Zachar. That motion carried 5-0. I do want to note a correction. It should not indicate item two for that motion. So two will be stricken, and three will be corrected to identify item two. So item two is adjournment. Motion by Zachar to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Tao. That motion carried 5-0. The meeting was adjourned at 4:07 PM. I respectfully submit those for your approval. Thank you.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I get a motion by Austin to approve, seconded by Veneman. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Matty?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight ayes to zero nays. Item eight, Consider for Adoption the Actions of the Standing Committees of the Common Council as follows. A, Finance and Property Committee Meeting Held on October 29th, 2024. Mr. Katna.
Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, in the third-floor conference room at City Hall. Meeting was called to order at 5 o'clock. Item two, Order of the Bills. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman to approve check number 23181 to 23482 in the amount of $1,594,912.04. Motion carried 2-0, with Alder Person Delaney abstaining. Item three, Discuss Animal Control Services from Wildlife Patrol LLC. No action was taken. Item four, In Open Session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin statutes. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried 3-0, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee considered a notice of circumstances giving rise to claim filed by Eagle Prairie, Inc., NCC Breiterwood's LLC regarding a claim for an alleged excessive tax assessment for 2024 and a settlement and dismissal of a lawsuit filed by Eagle Prairie, Inc., NCC Breiterwood's LLC regarding its tax assessment for 2023. Item five, the committee returned to open session. Item six, the committee moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman, to agree to refund Eagle Prairie, Inc. in the, in amount equal to the 2024 net tax rate on $200,000 of assessed value, and agreed to a dismissal of the 2023 and 2024 claims. Motion carried 3-0. Item seven, the committee took action on a settlement and dismissal of a lawsuit filed by Eagle Prairie, Inc., NCC Breiterwood's LLC regarding its tax assessment for 2023. That was included in the motion on item six. Item eight was adjournment. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0, and meeting adjourned at 5:52 PM. And with that, I make a motion to submit these for approval.
I get a motion by Katna, seconded by Pence, go over. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Matty?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight ayes, zero nays. Item B, Finance and Property Committee Meeting Held on November 12th, 2024. Mr. Katna.
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 12th, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Item one was called to order. Meeting was called to order. Item two is consider for approval, a request from GameStop, Inc., Mark H. Robinson agent, located at 930 Coon Avenue for renewal of a second-hand article dealer license. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman to approve a request from GameStop, Inc. Motion carried 3-0. Item three, Consider for Approval, Request from E-Way Sales LLC, Jonathan Ruder agent, located at 2660 Eighth Street South for renewal of pawn broker, second-hand article dealer and second-hand jewelry dealer licenses. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to approve a request from E-Way Sales LLC, Jonathan Ruder agent. The motion carried 3-0. Item four, Consider for Approval, The Appointment of Eric T. Adamski as a successor agent for retail Class A fermented malt beverages and retail Class A intoxicating liquor license for QuickTrip 347 on the premise located at 4611 Eighth Street. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to approve the appointment of Eric T. Adamski as successor agent for the retail Class A malt beverage license and the retail Class A intoxicating liquor license. Motion carried 3-0. Item five, Consider Request from Zaire Enterprises LLC on Eighth Street, Mohammed Naim agent for retail Class A fermented malt beverages and retail Class A intoxicating liquor license for the premise located at 2411 Eighth Street South. This item and item six were considered together. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman to approve both requests for retail Class A fermented malt beverages and retail Class A intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 2411 Eighth Street South and 3660 Eighth Street South. Motion carried 3-0. Item seven, Consider for Approval, A 2025 Contract with the Southwood County Humane Society for Animal Shelter Services. No action was taken on this item. Item eight, Consider for Adoption Resolution Setting the Passenger Fares for Mass Transit Services. It's moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman to approve a resolution setting the passenger fares for mass transit services as presented. Motion carried 3-0. Item nine, Consider for Adoption a Resolution Setting the Equivalent Residential Unit Charge for Stormwater Management Utility. It is moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to approve a resolution setting the equivalent residential unit charge for stormwater management utility as presented. Motion carried 3-0. Item 10, Consider for Approval, Budget Amendment Number Three. It's moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman to approve the amendment. Motion carried 3-0. Item 11, Order of the Bills. It is moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman to approve checks 23483 to 23842, totaling $3,169,243.11. Motion carried 2-0, with Delaney abstaining. Item 12 was set next meeting date, and the next regular meeting is set for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. Item 13 was adjournment. Meeting was adjourned at 6:01 PM. And with that, I make a motion to submit these for approval.
I get a motion by Katna. Mr. Delaney.
Thank you. I'd just like to speak on number eight. During the meeting, we had talked about changing fares for... Well, we did change fares for one. But we had also talked about changing fares for the other groups. And if you guys haven't seen that, I think... And if you guys haven't seen that, I think that you should look in your packet and take a look at it. And I think that should be a thing of discussion that we have. For me personally, I probably would abstain from that because we are, I mean, we use mass transit a lot. But I would say, I would caution raising those fares just because we have a resident population that is very elderly, and also we have a lot of disabled in our population. So I would say if we're still at lower than most cities, I think that's fine. But I really do think that this should be a discussion that we should have, and that's not part of this tonight. But it was brought up during that meeting, and I, I think that's something that we should talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a motion by Katnau, seconded by Austin. Any other conversation? Go ahead, Maddie.
I'd like to hold out item seven.
All right. Ms. Palmquist holding out item seven. Anything else? All right. Any objection to holding out item seven? Seeing none, we're, go ahead and cast your vote for the remainder of the minutes. Maddie?
Aye.
Thank you. Remainder of the minutes passed, eight ayes to zero nays. Go ahead, Ms. Palmquist.
So in the past two weeks, I've received several emails and phone calls relating to the discussion about creating an RFP and opening bidding for the city's need to provide animal control services. The majority of the contacts that were made with me were residents who supported the Southwood County Humane Society and would like to see us continue to contract with them for animal control services. Additionally, based on my experience so far with the city's RFP process, I think it's unreasonable to expect that we will be able to create, release, score, and then select a suitable contractor by the time that our current contract expires. So with that, to respect the wishes of our community and to provide the members of that community the services in a timely fashion, my motion is to refer this contract back to the Property and Finance Committee to discuss and agree upon terms of the contract.
So I had a motion by Palmquist, seconded by Veneman. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Maddie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, seven ayes to one nay. Mr. Pollock voting in the negative. Do I need to say that? All right, item C, Public Works Committee meeting held on November 7th, 2024. Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, the Public Works Committee met on Thursday, November 7th, in council chambers. All members were present. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review the engineering and street department monthly activity reports. Those reports were reviewed. Item three, review bid results for the 2024 crushing contract and consider awarding the bid to the low-qualified bidder. Motion by Austin, seconded by Penscover to accept the bids and award the project to Cartechner. That motion carried three zero. Item four, review and consider modifying the parking along Dale Street between Sixth Street South and the East cul-de-sac. Steve's Plumbing and NNN Auto were present to discuss their concerns, and no action was taken. Item five, review and consider modifying the parking along Sixth Street South and Dale Street and Dewey Street. No action was taken. Item six, review and consider a resolution proposing to alter the at-grade crossing on 32nd Street North, north of Kingston Road. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin, to adopt the resolution to file a petition for the alteration of an at-grade crossing on 32nd Street as presented, and that motion carried. Item seven, review and consider grade crossing improvements on Kingston Road. Motion by Penscover, seconded by Palmquist to pursue closing the crossing voluntarily. That motion carried. Item eight, review the referral list. The list was reviewed. Item nine is setting the next meeting date, which was set for December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM. And item 10 was adjournment. The meeting was adjourned at 5:56 PM. And that concludes the report of the Public Works Committee.
Counsel, what are your wishes? Mr. Katnau?
Is there anybody from Steve's Plumbing or NNN Auto here that would like to speak? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion by Pluus, seconded by Penscover. To approve the motion, the minutes. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Palmquist?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight ayes, zero nays. Item D, Human Resource Committee meeting held on November 14th, 2024. Mr. Delaney?
The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee met on November 14th at 4:30 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. All committee members were present, with City Attorney Schill appearing via Zoom. Also present were other person Penscover, Mayor Zachar, Human Resources Manager Ryan Hartman, Fire Chief Todd Ekis, and Kevin Fangman. Item one was called to order. Chairperson Delaney called the meeting to order at 4:30 PM. Item two, HR update. Update was provided, no action taken. Item three, consider a renewal of the onsite fitness and physical therapy services agreement with Advanced Physical Therapy and Sports Medicine SC. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluus, to approve the renewal of the onsite fitness and physical therapy services agreement with Advanced Physical Therapy and Sports Medicine SC. Motion carried three zero. Discussion and consider for approval continuing the current City Hall building hours from Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM till noon on Friday through December 31st, 2025. Motion by Pollock, seconded by Delaney, to approve the continuation of the current City Hall building hours of Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM till 12:00 PM through December 31st, 2025. Motion carried three zero. Item five, discuss and consider for approval a request from Fire Chief Ekis for a recommended stipend additional compensation of $5,300 annually for a battalion chief who is designated as deputy fire chief. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluus, to approve a request from Fire Chief Ekis for additional assignment compensation of $5,300 annually for a battalion chief who is designated as deputy chief. Motion carried three to zero. Item six, committee may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, pair one, pair E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pollock to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero in closed session. The committee discussed negotiations and strategy regarding the progress of collective bargaining of successor labor agreements with IEFF and WRPPA. Committee will adjourn in closed session, which it did. Motion by Pluus, seconded by Pollock to adjourn. Motion carried three zero, meeting adjourned at 5:21 PM.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I had a motion by Austin to approve the minutes. I got a seconded by Veneman. Mr. Delaney?
I would like to hold out five. I had passed this so that we could all discuss it here. I believe that Mrs. Palmquist had some questions, and I'd like to hear those get answered. I haven't, she would be able to explain her questions.
All right, Mr. Delaney wishes to hold out item five. Any reason? Any objection? Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes for the remainder of the minutes. Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, eight ayes, zero nays. Mr. Delaney, item five.
I would like Madeline to take over if she still has those questions. Otherwise, we could just vote and pass it.
Ms. Palmquist, do you have any questions about item five?
I do not. I think we need a little bit of cleanup on our, on our process to make sure that we have all of our, all of our job descriptions aligning with positions prior to appointing them regardless of where they sit in our structure. But my initial concern about the job description being approved by the Human Resources Committee will be resolved sometime in the near future, and moving forward, we will be diligent on doing a better job.
All right.
If there are no other discussions, I'd say most to approve.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or concerns about item five? And what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Katnau to approve item five. Got a seconded by Delaney. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, seven ayes to zero, to one nay. Sorry. All right. Item E, Legislative Committee meeting held on October 29th, 2024. Mr. Katnau?
Legislative Committee met Tuesday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM in the third floor conference room at City Hall. Alderman Veneman substituted for Alderman Austin in this meeting. Item one was called to order. Meeting was called to order. Item two was a discussion regarding revisions to the city ordinance providing for matters referred to committees and the actions of council. Section 2.04, pair three of the municipal code. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Veneman to have the city attorney prepare changes to section 2.04, pair three, and take out recommendation to clarify that items at committee will be referred to the common council whether there is a positive, negative, or no recommendation. Motion carried three zero, see attached proposed ordinance. Item three, discussion regarding revisions to the city ordinance regulating chickens. Section 25.03, pair three of the municipal code. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Veneman to direct the city attorney to make the discussed revisions to the ordinance regulating chickens. Motion carried three zero, see attached proposed ordinance in the packet. Item four, discussion regarding revisions to Chapter Two, City Administration, including language cleanup and a provision regarding the procedure for filling common council member vacancies. Motion by Katnau, seconded by Veneman to direct the city attorney to add section 2.13, pair two, as discussed as it relates to council vacancies. Motion carried three zero, see the attached proposed ordinance in the packet. Item five, meeting was adjourned at 8:09 PM. And with that, I motion to submit these for approval.
And I got a motion by Katnau. Mr. Delaney?
Can I hold out two?
Mr. Delaney wanting to hold out item two. Does anybody object? No objections. Item two held out. What are your wishes on the remainder of the minutes? I got a motion by Katnau to accept the remainder of the minutes. I have a second, I have a second by Delaney, and then a request to speak. Mr. Delaney?
I'd also like to speak on number four. So I don't know if everybody was able to attend or watch this. I actually didn't get to see it on Facebook, and I didn't see it anywhere else either through the community media. Yeah, I didn't see that on there. Maybe it got on there later. Anyway, so this is a discussion regarding how vacancies were filled, and we had quite a discussion there. A lot of points were brought up, especially one that Mr. Austin had brought up, which I since think was an excellent point that he had made during the last round of filling vacancies. And I do think that there should be a process. What we ended up going back for was just the, what the state recommends to do. But I do think that we should have that discussion because not everybody was there. Ryan Austin's point before, I don't want to speak for him, but his point was that whenever we do appoint somebody as a council to fill a vacancy, that it gives them an unfair advantage in the upcoming election, which, you know, I, over the last two appointments, I think that council got it right at least half the time. So I guess, I guess that's about all I have to say.
Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, for bringing this to the floor. Again, my comments were to this item specifically, that I don't believe it's common council's place to appoint any council member. I think regardless of the time remaining in, in the term, it should be brought to special election. I understand the work that is entailed by that, and it can be difficult at times, but I think we owe it to our residents to allow them to make that decision and not do it for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So does anybody, oh, I'm sorry, can I go?
Do you want to? Mr. Delaney?
Okay, sorry. So does anybody want to make any changes or just leave it as it is? I do think that Mr. Austin brings up a valid point. So, I mean, are we just going to leave it as it is and let each council decide? Are we going to have anything written further in our ordinances?
Are you good for now, Mr. Delaney? I'm going to call, Maddie, are you trying to speak?
Yes.
Okay, Maddie, then.
If I may have the floor.
Yep, go ahead.
Great. So I agree with Mr. Delaney that we should have a documented process. I don't agree necessarily on writing it into the ordinance, but I'm not exactly sure how or where we would kick off how that process is written or where it lives if it isn't an ordinance.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Austin on this. I, I, I think it should be, again, there's a lot of work to special election, but I agree, not really reference to the time. Could be a long, still almost a full term, or it could be half a term. I still think it should be an election. I don't think it's our business to elect, to appoint a council person. That's all.
Mr. Katnau?
Thank you. I'll speak to what we talked about that night and kind of where I still stand on this. So there, this is addressed in, in the state law, and really where it stands is a common council can appoint someone like we've done in the past. You can order a special election. The options are left up at that time to that council. Each situation's different. I mean, we, I, I could see in the future, I mean, you don't know if, if multiple seats could open up at one time, when the next election is, how much is remaining on the term. There's so many different variables. I thought it best to just leave as is and leave that decision up to future councils instead of making that decision for them. As, you know, if we put this into ordinance, it could be on the books 20 years from now, and they're bound by our decision tonight, and maybe they're in a different position than we've been in the past with one person missing or X amount of time. with one person missing or X amount of time until an election. So I would just like to clarify that, you know, where it stands right now is both of those are still an option, and they're, they're taking up, or they're taking up each incidence that it, that it occurs. So I, I would, I would stand by that, and, uh, whatever opinion people have on it, it, it takes place in a meeting before a decision is made on that, on whether to appoint or have a special election.
Any other questions or comments on item four? We're still speaking? All right, so. All right, so we're holding out two. What are your wishes on the balance of the report? Oh, I'm sorry, we already have a motion and a second on the balance of the report. Go ahead and cast your ballots, votes. Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Uh, item two.
Okay, so when our country was founded, they did not want the centralized government king system anymore, and they put the power into a decentralized government, into the local governments around the country, which is the way it should be. We, as council members, should have the, actually, the city council probably has the most impact in people's day-to-day lives with the city. Do think that this should be a, like a coveted position, and the best people should run and give their time as community servants. So what we had discussed here was how our government runs. And if we want, and I mean, ideally, what would happen is you have a, a council made up of the best people in the city, and they make logical decisions for the citizens in an order to improve their society. And, um, I wanted to have this discussion on how that works, and if you wanted to have the committees, um, hold power over the council, or have the council decide. And we had that discussion that night. I do think it would be worth considering talking about, although it doesn't seem like many people really want to join in on any conversation here. So, I mean, I just want to have that conversation. What we ended up deciding was, yes, no matter what happens, uh, an item that is on the agenda with no ma, if it doesn't get any votes or anything, the council can still overturn that, which ideally, with a, a good council, they should be able to have the right to do that, so. If anybody else has anything to add, I would appreciate it, but it's not necessary, I guess.
Katna?
Thank you. I'll, I'll have some discussion with the Patrick. I, I would just state that I, I do agree with some of what Patrick has said. It is important to either attend or watch the committee meetings before common council. I don't think we could put that in ordinance anywhere. I don't think it, you know, make it mandatory, but I would encourage everybody to so that when we do get to these items and they're pulled out and voted on individually, that you at least hear or were a part of the same discussion that happened at that committee level. Because the, these are really working committees. This is where some of the, the sausage is made, so it'd be said, uh, some of the stuff, information that you may not get when we pull it out, and we got a whole room full of us discussing, so. Uh, the system works as is, um, but it works better when people are informed on the topics that happen at committee meetings. So watch them or attend them. I, I would encourage that, and I think this is kind of addressing what was talked about that night.
Anyone else? Mr. Veneman?
Sue, so did you pull the recommendation out of that? Said to take out recommendation to clarify?
Well, yeah, I mean, because I, I think the, uh, let me find it here. I, I took it out where it says upon the recommendation to the appropriate committee. I think because there was some confusion on, did that mean a positive recommendation? That it, the com, the committee had to have a, so it's out at that point, so it's not upon the recommendation. But I, it's my understanding, though, that you wanted to make it clear that it could be a positive or negative or no recommendation to the common council. So that's why the second part's there, so. Um, I guess that's what I understood the direction to me to be, to make it clear that, that it could go to council no matter what happened at committee.
Thank you. Mr. Venom, you finished?
Um, no, actually.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I still, um, in favor of the committee structure, if you will, in that, um, it does give, um, the council as a group an area of expertise. I mean, obviously, I try to go to every committee meeting. Um, but my focus now is I'm on the finance committee, so that's my focus. And, but in order, I agree 100% with Mr. Katna that we definitely should, um, continue to attend or view. There's plenty of access to them, um, all these meetings. But yeah, I, I still believe the small committee, um, is a good way to have the, the nuts and bolts, and then bring it to the council for the larger picture thing, so just wanted to say that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Pluus?
I guess mine is more just a question. Uh, with our current makeup, doesn't the council already have the ability to pull an item even if it was not voted in favor of, and have a discussion at council?
Yes. That would have been my, yeah, that was my interpretation.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Delaney?
Okay, so this was more to clarify because it says based upon recommendation, and a lot of times, nothing would, I mean, happen at, um, the committee because you have three people that don't want to move anything forward, which happens from time to time, but yet council would still take it up. And it kind of goes against our own ordinances that that is a recommendation. When there's nothing that happens, how can that be a recommendation? Either positive or negative or otherwise. So that's why I had asked for a clarification on this, and this is what we had changed it to, and that's where we're at, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Me, Maddie.
Go ahead, Ms. Palmquist.
I just wanted to say that I, that was a very helpful discussion that we had during this meeting, and I appreciate the clarification that we've added to the ordinance so that there's no question about what the council can and can't do, and there's no room for any member of the council to interpret what's here. It's clear that we can pull anything out, and I think now the ordinance accurately reflects what we're doing in action and in policy. So I appreciate the changes that were made and how quickly they were made. Thank you, Attorney Schill. Over.
Yep, thank you. All right, I did get a motion by Austin in there.
Motion to approve item two.
To approve item two. I got a second by Veneman. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven ayes to one nay. Item nine, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports. Um, everything will be on file. If you haven't already read it, you are encouraged to do so. Item ten, referrals to committees. Jennifer?
I have received no referrals.
No referrals. Item 11, adjourn. What are your wishes? I got a motion by Delaney, seconded by Veneman. Go ahead and cast your votes. Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight ayes to zero nays. Meeting closes at 7:01. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a good night.